It's good, I'd like to call this meeting the order. It's the Buckeye Elementary School Board of Education. Tuesday, December 13th, 2016. Regular meeting at 7:00 PM. Uh, 7:11? Carta?
Here.
Salladette?
Here.
Councilman?
Here.
Nancy?
Star?
Here.
Do you want to give the question, please, to the board? The life is between you and us, aren't we?
United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. Nice big group. Some nights it's way sparer. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education and public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. The approval of the Mets, resolved Buckeye Board of Education approved the Mets of the special and regular meetings of November 8th, 2016, and the special meeting of November 29th, 2016. You have a motion, please?
Motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Discussion. Joel Hockman?
Salladette?
Yes.
Dom?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Councilman?
Yes.
Carta? Yes. Following our recommendations, has been identified for approval as part of the consent agenda for this meeting. Board member wishes to remove any items from the agenda before the discussion prior to taking action through the superintendent or board president. Approval of the consent agenda. Resolved Buckeye Board of Education approved the consent agenda of December 15th, 2016. I presented. And for once, I don't think we have any change. Anything in motion to accept?
Accept.
There's a second. Discussion. Joel Hockman?
Councilman?
Yes.
Carta?
Yes.
Carta?
Yes.
Superintendent Information Lates?
Yes, our first item is our Students of the Month. So we're excited to recognize and honor our students of our administration that come forward and introduce our special guest.
Primary, please present Ms. Ava P'Archie as the primary student of the month. Ava is a first grader in Mrs. Hay's class. And Mrs. Hay had this to say about Ava. I'm so lucky to have Ava in my class this year. She's a sweet, hardworking student. She's also kind-hearted and patient when working with others. Ava is very conscientious about doing her work and wants to please. Ava's always willing to help in mass and is liked both peers and adults in the head of the classroom. She's very responsible and always chooses to do the right thing. His positive attributes are the reason why she was chosen as the Student of the Month, and why she's a strong role model for others. She's truly been a delight in my classroom this year. And she most definitely deserves the title Student of the Month.
And our Buckeye Intermediate Student of the Month is a familiar face to our board members today. Uh, it's Curtis Gokman. Curtis is in Mrs. Christopher's and Mrs. Aubrey's fourth grade class. Mrs. Christopher says that Curtis is a pleasure to have in class. He's cooperative and always eager to lend a helping hand to his teachers and fellow classmates. Curtis always displays a positive attitude. He's conscientious and achieves academic success in all subject areas. Curtis is an outstanding role model and excellent school citizen. And in his spare time, Curtis enjoys playing football, soccer, and baseball. And he also raises livestock, which he shows at the Medina County Fair and at the Ohio State Fair. Curtis Gokman.
Don't worry, I won't have him.
I'm Mr. Flood, and I, first of all, would like to welcome and thank Michael Brunz for being up here with us tonight. Michael is the junior high student of the month. And his team had this to say about him. Michael's extremely hardworking, who is super polite and positive. He is kind and caring and always goes the extra mile on everything he does. Michael has never shy to contribute to his class discussion as well. He is very well organized and is not afraid to be a leader with both inside and outside of the classroom. He is not afraid to step up and do the right thing with a busy schedule outside of school as well. Other than being a fantastic person and student, Mike also keeps himself busy with two, with many activities. He's involved in Buckeye Soccer. He also plays for Upper 90, as well as is involved in the school play and is one of the founding fathers of Stand By Me. Michael Brunz.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Mr. Tugert, the principal here at the high school. And I'm pleased to have both my Students of the Month with me tonight. As I've said at other meetings, but I just think it's a nice thing to remember because I think it really shares a lot about what other, what the peers think of these students. Our High School Students of the Month are selected. We give them kind of general criteria and then they are selected by a kind of a student advisor. And so again, I just think that's an extra compliment as they're thought very highly of their peers. And they definitely were a good choice this month. Our Student of the Month is Sophia Barnes. Sophia is going to go into Bowling Green next year on a soccer scholarship. She actually has been the pack player two years in a row. She is involved with student council and is the senior class president. She takes numerous C-12 courses and advanced courses with a 3.8 GPA. And honestly, she may be one of the nicest girls I've ever met. So congratulations. Zach Funk is our male Student of the Month. Zach, you may recognize him as he is the drum major in the band. He's been in dance for five years. He's also part of our teacher training program. This year, it's leadership. And I think it really shares a lot about Zach's leadership that, you know, the band, obviously, every few years goes through their transition. We had a new drum major this year. It's Melissa George, had done that for two years. Zach came in, just did a great job, showed a lot of maturity as a leader and helped them qualify for state three times, including their best score that they've ever got in school history, if you can imagine the story. Zach would like to be a teacher, so great choice. And probably in search of tennis history and possibly also music, if you say that with passion. Congratulations to Zach.
Congratulations, and Sophia, I think I've had one of few superintendents to meet a student for the first time in a prod dunking contest. She was my spotter as I was done. We go way back. Our next part here is administrative presentation. We have Mr... Okay, Mr. Flood is the one to be represented?
I'm Zed.
Who is the Zed? Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank Mrs. Simak for being up here tonight and the love. Again, I want to kind of lead into this, first of all. A few years ago, obviously, Mrs. Gokman kind of led the charge when she was here as our directing coordinator in bringing our fifth graders some new technology. And that has kind of just really evolved and escalated. And every single year, Mrs. Simak has been a huge piece of that. What you and I went to school and once we all think we knew of school has changed and evolved so much. And so I asked Mrs. Simak if she would kind of share what our junior high has been able to bring to this district. And I know that's going to continue in the years to come here at Buckeye. But one of the biggest pieces is the one-to-one. So with that being said, Mrs. Simak?
All right, I'm told I need to talk fast. So, yeah, I'm just gonna... All right, um, what I really just did, I'll skip through this. I just kind of put it in some categories. We, two years ago, this is our third year now with technology class, we created a technology course, which was a requirement for all incoming seventh graders. With the push for technology and secondary education and college education requiring really very little paper, we felt it was necessary to go beyond keyboarding. And so that was kind of how our technology class was born. Every seventh grader does have to take it in a rotation and then it is an elective as an eighth grader. So I was just kind of looking at some categories. And the first category was providing feedback and assessment and what techno... whoops. Google Classroom is our push right now. Most of us are using it or the majority of us are using it in the building. And what this does is it gives a lot of student responsibility and accountability and they're, we're able to see right on the spot who we need to talk to on a day-to-day basis, posting of materials, handouts, et cetera. And I think most classrooms are using them. Formative assessment is a huge focus of not only DLT, BLT, TBTs, all those acronyms. But these are, technology has given us a really quick and easy way to get some formative assessment from our students that really just turns around and guides our instruction, not only on the spot in class, but also day-to-day. What they know, what they don't know, et cetera. Also too, the, y'all, I, teacher myself, all of my fellow life majors teachers know that this is how we graded papers and how we assess drafts and such. So now we're able to, right on the spot, from my comfy PJs at home with my Starbucks, usually on Friday nights, don't be jealous. And we're able to edit not only our students' work, but they can help edit each other's work. On the spot, instantly, through the use of Google Forms and Add-ons, I literally, within five minutes, can give students feedback on what their percentage is. I can also see what questions students scored poorly on as a class and just make adjustments right there on the spot. Instruction, we remember these, right? Okay, and this is what we have now. We went from the TVs, the copy machines, to instant videos and more interaction with our students. These are the ways that students can show us what they know. Okay, if there's a multitude of ways and things that they feel comfortable with that... And I'll just share our personal experience. You know, in the past, we've only had emails for the, for the purpose of allowing students access through Google Drive and things like that. Now that we have the Gmail and we can actually correspond back and forth, you talk about feedback, I mean, I probably answer 10 to 15 emails every night. I give my students a cutoff because I say I'm reading my Kindle, which means falling asleep with it. But I give them a cutoff and sometimes they just need that one question answered or a little bit of fine tuning for an assignment and they're feeling already better before they go to bed that night. That's why I put this picture. So we've gone from keyboarding class to teaching full digital citizenship. Okay, we're talking common sense media. We're teaching coding. We're talking about digital footprints. We're talking about being good users of social media. This is what our tech class looks like. This is seventh and eighth grade. And we're using programs like SketchUp. So they're researching habitats, animals. They're doing informational reports. And then they're designing the places for them to live and things for them... Oh, you can see a little bachelor pad, I think, right there. This was one of my favorites. We had a student, Cassidy Cannon, actually, who was out on leave. She had knee-to-knee surgery. Really felt disconnected from the class and with the help of Mr. Fabian, who's not here. We created a way for her to enable hangouts on her laptop. And that is her hanging out with our class, in class. So that, right from the comfort of her own home, so that she didn't miss out. Instead of being able to go, you know, cross-country, we take them right there. This is Mrs. Middlemister's class touring the loop. Right there in class is a virtual field trip. Hanging out, collaborating, Google Classrooms, Newzella, which I'll get to, homeschool communication, huge. Social media, we used to take the little paper to them, hope that they get there, and normally they don't. Remind, Facebook, digital signage in our cafeterias and media centers are huge. This is, where's this good one? She's here somewhere. Okay, this is Buck TV. They're editing their episodes. There's their green room. I mean, these kids are out and about doing the job of journalists. Desk calendar to Google calendars. Our building uses this for everything. You really cannot use a room in our building without signing it out. And I'm trying to show students where this is. I'm hoping that they'll start to use that. We went from the whole, you know, calculator and adding all the way across. Yes, I did that. And then lastly, in our, in our library, we have iPad sign-ups. There's a password for the day. We have Info Ohio. They can search anything that they need. We have wonderful helpers that come down and bring things for the students. And obviously, it's here to enhance. So nothing can replace good teachers. But it really allows us to, A, keep up with the times and connect with our students a little more, especially those that might be a little bit on the shy side. Getting to connect with them in that way is, is wonderful. So, darn, made it really quick. That's one-to-one. Thank you.
So for the pictures? Hold on a sec. Can we get a picture of our Students of the Month before they leave? Would you mind?
Take a break?
Yeah.
Just let me know where you are.
Okay, next we have Gale, who's going to give us an update on food service.
Hi, everybody. Food service is racket and wrong. Can't believe that the years go by so quickly. This year, the Department of Education came up with a new administrative review process and it was quite in-depth. It started with, I had to attend an all-day meeting with them explaining all the documents that they wanted. There was like 13 sections of information, like looking at applications, meal planning, professional development, civil rights, pass-up verification, board policies, wellness policies, financial reports. All in all, we ended up, I ended up emailing back to ODE over a thousand documents. It was crazy. Documents that they sent me that we had to put our name on and I had to send them back to prove that we did it. But all in all, we had our inspection. We had to go through a two-hour phone conversation after I processed all that. And then I actually had the inspector come on site for a whole day. And so going through all those documents, we came up with three minor citations that were pretty minor and easy to fix. So I'm real proud of all of those cooks. They did real well. Okay?
And Gale, thank you because that was a lot of time and effort and definitely going through before. You guys did an amazing job with that.
Thank you.
Next up is Jim Ty for Buckeye Maintenance Committee.
Well, you all can probably hear me from over here because I'm having a fancy picture or anything. I'm in charge of the maintenance here at the school district. So some of the projects that we have going on, if you look around out in the hallway, you'll see LED lights. In here, you will not. We're trying to get them in here. We're trying to get, everything that we go to replace now is going to an LED fixture of some kind. Whether it's outside pole lights, whether it's inside lights, whether it's fluorescents in the classroom. We're sitting in a building right now that's 13 years old. I can probably tell you, every fluorescent light in this building needs to be changed. What are we going to change it to? You're going to go, why do they need to be changed? They're still on. They're, they're on. Fluorescents will stay on forever. They're costing you 100% of the money. You're getting 50% of the light out. We need to do, things like that need to happen. We're looking at fence projects out at the baseball diamond. We're looking at fence projects at the football field. We're looking at moving a baseball field. We're looking at updating some things out at the field house. We've got some water heater we're going to put in out there as backups to the geosystems. We had a geosystem go down last year. It took from 10 o'clock one night till the next morning to freeze the water lines and flood the building. So those are things that we try to keep up on a daily basis. I'm sure everybody that's sitting here and walk around and see a light on, see a crack in the floor, sees something going on. But we do the best we can with what we got, the people we got, the time we got, and the money we got. It's a, it's a fine line between what has to happen and what can't happen and the monies that are available. In a nutshell, we try to keep it up. I try to keep this place up as if it was my house. I treat my equipment, our equipment that we use as if it's mine. And I treat these buildings as if they're mine. I may not be the most popular person all the time. If you're going to tell me your code, I'm going to say your room's within parameters of the building. Sorry, suck it off, we're a sweater. I don't know, but it is what it is. That's it. Okay?
Jim, with our cold weather, how's our heating system right now?
Everything's doing good right now. Your high school's sitting, the rooms that I can see that I have control of, that we put the new system in for, 90% of the high school's sitting within one degree of each other right now. And it's pretty much like that on a daily basis. Every once in a while, there's a snap move. I'll get a call, Gable called me. Somebody's cold, somebody's hot. You look and it's like, it's one of those days. It's within a degree of where it's supposed to be. Okay, it's 70 degrees. Yeah, I'm not going to set your classroom to 74 if that's what you want to keep in your house. You probably go home and their house is 65, but they want their classroom to 75. Okay, so, like I said, that's what it is. But we're doing good.
How often do those sensors go that? Like the time that touches?
In the room? Don't jinx that. That's not...
All they don't add is my feet now.
Nancy with the student special needs update.
Come on over, ladies. Go ahead, down. Next, one more.
There we go. We've got a pretty little orange thing that I did not do. So I don't want to take credit for tonight because our special needs compact, which is a program that we have with Buckeye, Black River, Highland, and Cloverleaf. These are two of the teachers that teach in the compact program of the students, the classes that we provide to that compact. And they're, they did the PowerPoint tonight and they're going to present. And then I do tell them I want to answer any questions that you ask to take some credit for. With Kelly Westner and Julie Doll. No, I'll sit here. You're going to run it?
Mm-hmm.
All right, as Nancy said, compact is a cooperative effort between Buckeye, Cloverleaf, Black River, Highland, local school districts. We work together to meet the needs of the disabled students. The compact provides a physically responsible way to service students who have low incidence handicaps, like autism, emotional disturbance, students with multiple handicaps. Buckeye's contribution to the compact is to provide services to students who qualify under the disability category of emotional disturbance. Units are available at the primary, intermediate, junior high, and high school levels. What is emotional disturbance? It's an inability to learn that cannot be explained by intellectual, sensory, or health factors, an inability to build or maintain satisfactory interpersonal relationships with peers or teachers, inappropriate types of behaviors or feelings under normal circumstances, a general pervasive mood of unhappiness or depression, a tendency to develop physical symptoms or fears associated with personal or school problems. So this pertains to students that struggle to maintain positive behaviors in the classroom. So these types of students benefit from a highly structured environment. Our district uses a positive behavior support model, which includes a token system. Students are provided with a collection bank. Positive behaviors are reinforced with coins just dropped into the container. The system...
Sorry.
The system assists students to discriminate between appropriate and inappropriate behaviors. To provide meaning to the tokens, a school store opens on Friday and students who have had three successful days during the week is measured by the classroom behavior chart get to purchase school supplies, candies, little toys, and such. It's something they really enjoy and look forward to. The level system, all the teachers kind of use an age-appropriate level system, but it's our goal for the students to participate in the general education setting as much as possible. The classroom level system provides a clear expectations and a plan for reintegration to the students' peer group. We use a precision request model. And that just means that teachers place a request. We give wait time, three to five seconds. If there's compliance, the behavior is reinforced. If there's not compliance, we restate the direction. We wait the three to five seconds again. If the student's compliant, we reinforce the behavior. If they're not, we use a reductive technique or a consequence is instituted. All right, the biggest piece to our program is communication. Parents and teachers cooperate in intricate part of the program. Daily communication is very, very important for us. Homeschool reports are sent home to provide opportunities for daily communication. These keep parents informed of the student's progress. And parents are asked to review, comment, and sign or return the book daily. We use a pre-mat schedule. And that is just a planned arrangement of tasks in which a desired activity always follows a more difficult task. We use the Body Basics Model here. And it is, I can't read it. It's a device for, and the word spells fever. So first of all, we want you to face the person that you're speaking to. We want you to use eye contact. Look at that speaker. Voice control, it's not what you say, it's how you say it. E is for expression on your face. Eye rolling and stink eye are strongly discouraged. And R stands for relaxed body pressure, which is the learning posture seat to seat, feet to floor. And this is example of what Mrs. Westner's Body Basics bulletin board looks like for the kids. The compact teachers are trained by the Crisis Prevention Institute, the CPI model. The training focuses on the identification of escalating behaviors and how to address them before they become a crisis. Teachers are trained to use interventions during periods of extreme or harmful behavior to help the student regain self-control. The compact is an innovative team-based approach to provide high-quality services to special needs students.
See, we were short, Gale. We did good. If you have any questions about the compact, I can get the portent to realize that we provide four classrooms. You can have a maximum of 12 in that classroom. We are... How many? Kelly, right now you're about nine. Mm-hmm. Mrs. Doll will be full, I believe, in January. And then we are close to full in the junior high. We have about eight in the high school. So these programs stay very, very full. They involve students from all those districts we mentioned. And then the compact does go both ways. So if we have students that have needs, Highland, Cloverleaf, and Black River provide the multi-handicapped classrooms as well to help cover our students with higher needs. Any questions? You can? Good.
Thank you very much. Next up is Greg King to share the success of Buckeye Band.
First of all, thank you for allowing us to come to do a presentation. I'm excited about being here tonight. I have our assistant marching band director, Angela White, and some of our students from our band. I want to bring in the board and thank the administration for all the support. Alyssa Schrail, this is August Keith, and Taylor McAdall, Michaela Perry, and Zach Funk, our drum major. So we just saw him earlier than I did. But first of all, I guess, activities and performances, this is what we've been doing over the last six months. June twentieth, we had a leadership meeting, and our drum major Zach Funk went to leadership camp in Canton at Walsh College, spent four days learning how to conduct, and he had to learn it really quick. Senior year, he had to learn how to conduct really quick, and he worked really hard at that. Went through leadership camp that helped us get off to a good start. Had summer rehearsals, we had band camp. Students five through eight performed for the Dinah County Fair Honors Band, the Valley City Street Fair, ten football games, five band competitions, and the OHSA playoff game that we hosted. State marching band finals. We performed for the groundbreaking and the dedication of the Gold Star Families Monument in North Township in the park. So we've been very busy. Veterans Day, performed for the Cleveland Cavaliers on November fifteenth. Band volunteers performed for the Dinah County Home Christmas Show. We hosted a horn step-up program for band members at the high school. And we also performed already for Pep Band last Friday for basketball games we'll be playing on Friday nights, including this Friday. And last but least, over the weekend, on Sunday, we performed at Christmas in the valley. So we've been very busy. This was a historic season for the band, and we wanted to share that with everyone. We had to debut the new uniforms, and we'd like to thank the Board of Education. They made a big difference this year in our local uniform on. It just makes you feel proud. We just performed our very best this year, and we had orange, brown, and white, and brought the colors of the school back. So that was awesome, and thank you for the uniforms. And it really made a big difference this year. Thank you for that. This was our first season this year performing with the state-of-the-art marching band show. We used digital electronics and digital sound effects as part of our show live. And that is the current trend in music education, to use sound effects as part of the show. And so we selected a show, and the plan started in February. We picked out a show, leased it, and the lease is up in December thirty-first. And we used it this season, and we did really, really well with it. And it was the first time we had used digital electronics while the marching bands played at the same time as speakers. Cloverleaf Band Competition, they were awarded an excellent rating, first place in Class B. At the Louisville Band Competition, excellent rating, first place in Class B. So we were off to a good start. At our third band competition, we qualified for state at the Sandusky Perkins Band Competition. And we also were awarded Best Visual Effect, Best General Effect, and also Best Cover Guard in Class B. University of Akron Band Competition, we were awarded, again, superior rating, and qualified for state marching band finals a second time. And we were awarded second place. And in the evening, we were awarded second place in Class B, and we qualified for state again at the Brunswick Band Competition. There was another band that we sort of made friends with, became rivals with, Bandura. We beat them early in the season, and they beat us twice, just competing, it was friendly. And we pushed each other to be our very, very best. At the end of the season, at the Brunswick Band Competition, that was our highest score that we can find on our records in school history. We scored two hundred and forty-seven point three five out of three hundred points. That is the highest score that we can find on record, everything that I have. So that was a really good season. Cover Guard had won their class at every contest we were at in Class B. So they had an outstanding effect, and the Cover Guard has won their class for every band competition we've been at for three years in a row. So Cover Guard's been outstanding. The previous high mark was two forty-six, so we beat it by a point, you know, and excellent rating at state marching band finals. We really had a very, very good fall. Looking forward to 2017. We have six Pep Band games, basketball games to play for. The Dinah County Soul Ensemble, we host that right here at Buckeye. We're also performing for the Lake Erie Monsters on Sunday, February the twelfth. And we'll start thinking on marching band show, field band auditions, Cover Guard audition, Buckeye Day, the school's musical, Thoroughly, Lyre Nelly, and spring concert commencement, and then Memorial Day break. We would like to thank, the reason I wanted the students, I wanted them to be able to turn on a thank you, just you guys made it happen. And thank you, Mr. Morgan, Carol, thank you to the entire Board of Education for the uniforms. The year before, we were replacing the aging trailer that we had that was leaking illness problems, and having that trailer has made a big, huge difference because we've been able to transport all the equipment that we need, and we can put up everything with full effort. It's a thirty-foot trailer that's made a huge impact for us. And right now, it's being staged for fundraiser. We have cookie dough in there. And the temperature's so cold, we have cookie dough in there right now. And we're sorting it out in there and delivering, excellent band trailers, so it's okay. Thank you, though, sincerely, from the students. We really appreciate it and the community's support. We're looking forward to next year, this upcoming spring semester. And we have a video that we played at our band thing, but a lot of people don't see maybe what we do behind the scenes. But it's like a family, and you stick together. We have our ups and downs, but we always work together and stick together and work through our problems and challenges. And so we'll let the pictures, pictures say a thousand words, so we'll let that go. I'm not known for taking great selfies, so some of these pictures are...
Details be true.
Oh, I'd like to thank Mr. Tom Schrail, that's Alyssa's father. He put together this video throughout the year for us. So, and I'd like to thank Mrs. Carol also for being our videographer to the band. And also the custodial staff, and maintenance department, Mr. Ty, thank you for everything. And also our principals, Mr. Tudor, Mr. Garrish, Mr. Flood, Mr. Morgan, thank you, Super Lieutenant. Thank you for all the support and guidance throughout this fall season. Thank you. Okay, I just wanna step back, watch the video. It's ready for you.
And then, thank you. I mean, one of the things that I've, we'll see you guys participated a couple times, and just amazing the, how well you performed and the consistency, but also the hard work I know you put in the summer months. It just, it just never is an easy time. And I want to thank you for that and recognize you for that, but also I want to just say thank you for the performances and your commitment to representing Buckeye the way you have. So thank you very much. I'm glad you didn't bring up the missing keeper of the football that I found out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would like to say you guys really do represent the school very well. It's amazing watching how you could rest from the beginning of the year where maybe the lines aren't quite so straight, and maybe the music isn't that strong. But as you move along, and the work that you put in, it really does show. And I also don't know how, when the technology doesn't work right, you can hold a pose for as long as you are, and then soon as it comes on, it's like you didn't miss a beat right on. I just would like to say you really do represent the district well.
In Brunswick, during the competition, the iPad didn't work. And so everybody was freaking out. The kids didn't know, but the parents knew. And there was nothing we could do. We just sat there and watched. I'd like to say that I'm a band parent. I have four years in the band, and I'm hoping my son will do the last year. It's a family, and it starts in June, and these are all my kids, and I'm all in on it. And it's, at the end of the band season, it's a letdown. It's a letdown for all the families because that's all we've done, you know, every single thing. We all are there. And we all own the trailer, and we're all with the kids, and it's really a lot of fun. Thank you, Dennis. Thank you for everything you gave me.
If you guys need to leave this time, feel free.
Yes, they have you to serve your cookie dough fundraiser.
We still need our...
Thanks again. Happy holidays to everyone.
I didn't see as important dates. We have our Buckeye Elementary School winter break, September nineteenth through January second. Students will return on January third. We also will have our Buckeye Board of Education organizational meeting on January fourth at four o'clock. That'd be 2017, and that'll be in the Buckeye Board of Education conference room. Also, I wanted to add to the agenda that we did have our first branding meeting, committee meeting today after school. And we will be sending out a survey here after the first of the year to get it put on some of our logo designs and get some feedback from the community on other items with a strategic plan. And so please be looking for that. It'll be sent out with an email, be on a webpage. We're also hoping to put in a flyer or a post. And also advertising to get that for that, so we can get as many of our community members as possible. So if there's any alumni that are coming home for the holidays, and please let them know that that'll be something that we also want their input on as well. So thank you for all of that effort. We continue to work towards identifying our logo for Buckeye. Next up?
Financial advisory committee.
We have a meeting, our last meeting. We went over the audit in the state. And it was a new audit, again, and I want to congratulate Carol for receiving the order of the state award, again. So congratulations. Our next meeting is technically, that audit is not posted, it's online for people to see. So you can check it out. If you have any questions, ask Carol. She knows inside and out, and she's talking about it a lot. Our next meeting is technically scheduled for January ninth. Depending on Ohio State being Clemson, Mrs. Hargill.
No comments.
We might have the Ohio State Buckeyes.
Stop it, yeah, Mr. Stall.
But we're gonna go, we're going to get transportation, and we'll be speaking about our survey for transportation that we want to give to high schools, see how many people would have actually utilized high school transportation if they was brought back. So we're trying to get a number based on how much high school classes we cost. So that's what the financial advisory committee's gonna be looking at over the next meeting.
And with that, please really send out and ask our members if they want to continue into next year. Public participation. Public is invited to speak to any of the agenda items or other school topics at this time. Comments should be limited to three minutes. Direct questions will not be answered by Board of Education members at this time. However, answers will be given at a later date as appropriate. Anyone want to speak to that?
Yes. Okay, I have just a comment about the calendar that we're going to adopt tonight. The winter break, you have students coming on Monday and Tuesday, and the workday on Wednesday. Did you take into consideration the high school does midterm and finals during that? Then finals will be Friday, Monday, Tuesday. Did you think about doing Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and the teacher birthday on Thursday? If we can do that, it would be a little bit better with the finals. And then you could just back up the student last day, that would be on Thursday, and the teachers would be there Friday. But we're really looking at the high school with the finals, midterms and finals during that time. That's my comment about that.
Tremendous. Overlapped, too.
And I thought that specifically for the finals, the dates, you know, we're setting that.
Any other...
No, no, mathematics.
Just a comment on the projected days of the week and months of the year goes January, February, March, May.
Two days, on the financial report.
Right, I'm a financial reporter.
Oh.
Okay.
Who's calling?
Mine.
Any other public comments? None. Treasuries report with two minutes.
I'm asking the board to accept the internal budget amendments amended certificates from the appropriations under our filing at Treasury's office.
And that's it? Entertained motion to accept treasury report? Motion. Clear the second. Discussion.
I'm delighted that we got the evaluation set for calendar year 2016. No one knows, but our valuation last year was what? Four hundred and thirty million dollars? It went to four hundred and seventy-one. This was the training, this is the update here, so I'm gonna consider it.
Yes, people have thought they could choose.
That takes into consideration the houses that everyone talks about. And there were a couple of tax amendments from the industrial firm. They are, and that one. That's ridiculous. And that is four hundred and thousand dollars in our common income. Which now is, shows that our financial deficit is probably...
Questions or discussion? We'll call you. That's it?
Yes.
Salin?
Yes.
Buckman?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes. Super attached recommendation for the Buckeye 2016-17 school calendar. We resolved that the Buckeye Board of Education approved the attached 2017-18 school calendar for Buckeye Elementary Schools as presented in Appendix A.
Entertained a motion to accept the calendar? Motion. Clear second? Discussion?
Did that fail or was that...
I think, I think we should go ahead and adapt. And if there is a real educational need, then we can work with the board. But I'd rather adapt at this time, rather kick it. About three months from now, we should adapt.
Betty, would you be willing to restate what you already told us?
What I said was, because the high school has finals and midterms, and contractual, we end our school year now, what, on December? That's what we're doing without. And semesters, or semesters are there. So, if we go with this calendar, and the teacher workday, the last day of the workday, is that Wednesday, that means finals are Friday, Monday, and Tuesday.
Wait a minute, what, Monday and Tuesday?
December. December.
Semester finals.
Semester finals. And sometimes, a final is a semester plus, it could be a final.
So, just, I'm a little slow, yeah, here, so I'll be patient with you. So, the twentieth is a teacher workday?
Yes, that's a teacher workday. It's a half-day in-service, half-day workday.
Okay, and then, the only eight is suggesting...
That maybe if he did finals, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, the teacher workday then would be Thursday. The half-day workday, that'd be the twenty-first, be the twenty-first. Then what you would do in May is move the last student day from that Friday to a Thursday, and then move the teachers from the Tuesday to the Friday. There would just be that little bit of move, but it just with the finals. You see what I'm saying?
I do see what you're saying. Okay. Okay.
Another question, please? Roll call, please?
No, I...
Okay.
I'm still processing, all right? So, I guess I need to know where Superintendent Morgan stands. I mean, is this a reasonable thing that you would recommend? Or would you like more time to think about that, or... I'm putting you on the spot.
Thank you for that. The, I think, based on Mr. Barbo said, I think I always amend it.
Okay.
I mean, I think the important thing, if you have a number of families that are looking for vacations, that they have to be applying for under one.
All right.
And so, if we were to delay that, I don't think it's really gonna make a huge difference on our start time or end time, which is about one day. I think we can certainly, we can talk with the administration and make that determination, that's something that's...
Okay.
...we're working on.
All right, I'm good.
So, we, we think that application in January, people can't afford vacations in January.
We change the date? Yeah.
If it's an extra day, it's not a vacation. Somehow, we need our families to learn that they're planning for some other expenses. It's a change. You know what, the best is staying for the same finals. And we're seeing...
So, anytime that people ask, I'll come up with a tenement with that.
What really interests you right now is the start date of school. That's their big thing, planning their vacations. Is that something you're solving? The start date is not a change, and the people...
I think it's fine either way, we will have a final answer not today anyway, so I think we just make a amendment, come to look on our website.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Stoll?
Yes.
Siselle?
Yes.
That's it? Duncan?
Yes.
Barco? Yes. I was sort of surprised that it didn't discuss about seven thirty.
All right, you good.
Approval of the first reading of the founding policy. Resolved that the Buckeye Board of Education consider the policies as the lawyers presented. Captain of the complete policies attached to board members' agendas as intended. Six one one zero grant funds. Six one 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 internal controls. Six one one two cash management of grants. Six one one four cost principles, spending federal funds. Six one one six time and equity program. Nine two one one district support organizations. And two five one zero adoption of textbooks.
I do have a question for you. On these financial ones. They're talking mainly the same funds that they're talking a new one after seven, within five days. And yet, this is setting up processes to invest that money. And if we make too much investments, we have to send it back to the government. I just want to make sure of the agreement, right?
Do you think that's gonna happen?
No.
I agree, I agree with you. This is, this is the one that the federal government wants to adopt. All of these are coming down from the federal government to the state.
Certified personnel resolved the Buckeye Board of Education through the following personnel items as presented. Number one, medical leave of absence resolved by Buckeye Board of Education through the request for medical leave of absence for Richard Paul, intervention specialist effective December first, 2016, to January thirty-first, 2017, as Paul will return on medical release. Item number two, medical leave of absence resolved by Buckeye Board of Education approved to extend the medical leave for Kurt Hachek from January first, 2017, until medically released by his position. Item B, classified personnel. Result of Buckeye Board of Education approved the following personnel items as presented. Number one, contract revision. Result of Buckeye Board of Education approved the revision of the contract approved by Keith Pesto. Substitute bus mechanic, Mr. Pesto's employment start date should be approved as eleven sixteen sixteen, rather than eleven thirty sixteen as previously stated. Item number two, contract revision resolved by Buckeye Board of Education approved the revision of the contract approved for April Johnson, substitute bus driver. Ms. Johnson's employment start date should be approved as eleven eleven sixteen, rather than eleven thirty sixteen as previously stated. Item three, resignation. Result of Buckeye Board of Education approved resignation of Susie Preston, elementary fair professional effective twelve sixteen sixteen. Item number four, retirement provision. Result of Buckeye Board of Education approved revised date pursuit of Ray of the Ex-Secretary. Mrs. Ray's retirement date should be two thirteen seventeen, rather than two ten seventeen as previously stated. Item C, classified substitute. Result of Buckeye Board of Education approved the following classified substitutes to work on a SDA basis for the 2016-17 school year, her professional fellow moron. Item D, supplemental contract approval. Result of Buckeye Board of Education through the following supplemental contracts, pending certifications, as well as resignations effective the 2016-17 school year as listed. It was resolved by the Buckeye Board of Education. The board has offered positions to those employees in the district for a license, and no such employee qualified for the position and accepted it. In addition, since no other qualified licensed individuals apply pursuant to R.C. thirty-three-one-three-point-five-three, the Board of Education approved the following supplemental contracts for a non-licensed individual. All supplemental contracts will be issued based on student minimum participation guidelines. And we have two presented there.
Entertain a motion to accept the superintendent's personnel items?
I understand.
Clear a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please?
Duncan?
Yes.
That's it?
Yes.
Siselle?
Yes.
Stoll?
Yes.
Barco?
Yes.
Result of Buckeye Board of Education accepted and recognized the following donations to Buckeye Local Schools as presented. Item A, as Oliver signs, Parents' Company of Students, Sam and Sarah Oliver, donated a welcome veteran's sign to NHS for our Veterans Day program. The sign is valued at a hundred and fifty dollars.
Entertain a motion to accept the donations?
Motion.
This is...
Second.
Session? Roll call, please?
Siselle?
Yes.
Stoll?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
That's it?
Yes.
Barco?
Yes.
Board comments?
Thank you all for coming. I just wanted to let you know that people that spoke have been taking time. I know it's not easy to come up in front of people and speak. But the whole idea is, I haven't told this company yet. The whole idea is, we want to know what's going on, but we also want to recognize you to the district, and we want to make it. Everybody have a happy holiday, and we'll see you all next year.
Yeah, thank you for the presentations. I know it was a lot of hard work that we had to... So, it was a good job, especially Mr. King bringing the students up there in the whole school. And the band was a great job, appreciate that. And Merry Christmas, happy holidays to everyone.
Again, to everyone, also, all staff, thank you for the presentations. It's, it's not always that we get to hear all of the good things that are happening. So, it's so wonderful, Phil, that you're back, and the meetings are recorded, so that we can go along and hear those things, too. I think that's important. And of course, my wishes to everyone for a happy, relaxing holiday season.
All, Merry Christmas, and Merry Christmas to you all.
And again, if anyone is interested in the position on the course on board, to get the application in to get pre-qualified before our organizational meeting, which means with the holidays, that means now. Okay? We'd like to wish everyone a very happy holidays coming up, and a safe one. And that's it? And a motion for adjournment? Motion?
Second.
Motion, there's a second? Discussion? Nobody wants to say? Roll call, please.
Siselle?
Yeah.
Duncan?
Yes.
That's it? Stoll?
Yes.
Or Stoll?
Yes.
Thank you all for coming.